Joe approached me about a visit he had with the gunning Chris Wagner, who's a paving contractor, who went out and evaluated point base, which kind of raised some questions that before I proceeded, based on our last conversation, I thought we would, he would, could inform you as to what he was told, and then we could decide whether to proceed as planned, or whether to change the course of action. So rather than speak for him, I'm gonna let Joe tell you about his experience.
Um, we looked at the whole street, and basically, there's about, what, forty or fifty foot section?
Right.
And it has to be replaced no matter what. I mean, even if we're gonna blacktop or whatever, that, it's just junk. And that, that's in front of the Ag Building.
Right, towards, towards the shopping center, that, that end.
And, um, but in looking at the rest of the street, he said structurally, it's fine. Some of the patchwork that's been done needs to be torn up and, and redone in a, in a
More meaningful.
Better fashion, you know, some of it had way too much put in, which created a hump. Some of it didn't have enough, and there's still a hole. Uh, but he said, to do the whole street, we're wasting our money. And he, he wouldn't even bet it. He wouldn't give me a price. He said, "I'm not putting my name on it, if that's what you guys wanna do."
Because of the reflective cracking problem.
Why, why wouldn't he give you a price?
Cause it didn't need to be done. He said to overlay the whole street.
Moral contractor. I'm not that moral. Hell yeah, I'll do it for ya.
Well, he said to overlay the whole street would be a waste of money, cause the majority of the street's in great shape. You just got about a forty foot section.
How do you determine that?
Well, it's not cracked or broken. I mean, there's, you know, it was poured in sections. So, you know, you got the normal little bit of bumps you're gonna have there, but like he said, that's real serviceable. That, probably two-thirds of it, from the Ford dealer down to, what, like you said, how many feet from the corner?
The doctor's office.
Right, by, by the doctor's office. And, you know, his suggestion was that, he said overlaying that, the pieces down on that end, would just be a waste of money, because what's under it isn't sound. So it's gonna crack, and it's gonna crumble.
Alright, I thought you were saying it was so good it didn't need to be fixed.
No, 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 no. What he's saying is, the majority of the street is, he's, but he's saying, rather than re, overlay the whole thing, just fix those pieces on the end, and then you got a good street.
Randy, why is he saying that's so bad down in that area? What kind of test did he do?
It's, it's crumbled, and it's been, our crew has done what they can with it, but it's not sound. If you go to put anything over it, it's like a bad foundation on a house. Putting more asphalt over the top of it isn't gonna fix it.
I think, I think we're in some confusion here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's saying that a good portion of the street is just fine.
Yeah.
But the part that's bad is really bad. Is really bad, and needs to come out, and his recommendation is, he says, regardless of what you do, if you wanna overlay it, fine, but you're still gonna have to make those things sound. And as far as he's concerned, he says, don't even overlay that other part, he says, just fix those bad pieces, would be the, the smart way to go.
And then fix the patch.
Right, and then fix the other stuff, you know?
Who is, who is this contractor?
Chris Wagner, Wagner Asphalt, they're one of the biggest in St. Louis.
I don't know.
I've never, um...
Okay, so I, I don't know what we're getting here. We're piecemealing stuff together.
No, we're not piecemealing anything.
Well, even if the Modoc, you talked about Modoc the last meeting, and I lay in bed thinking about it. Modoc fixes all the bad pieces before they overlay it out on the interstate, and that's what this gotta be.
Right, you, you, if you just, if you just overlay over stuff that's crumbling, it's just gonna collapse. It's not gonna last.
There's no question about that. I think everybody gets that.
Yeah.
So this, this biggest paper in St. Louis won't give you a price on fixing the bad spot?
He doesn't concrete. Uh, he does concrete, uh, sidewalks and stuff, but not streets.
So what he said, Joe, is that dig out the bad parts, replace them, and then come back and overlay, or not overlay at all?
Well, he, he says it doesn't need to be overlaid. He said the street itself is in great shape, except for that sixty, fifty, sixty foot.
You did overlay it, just for the driving surface, you'd do two inches.
But he said that some of the patches that are there make the street a lot worse than what it is. Either they don't have enough in it, or have too much. He said if, if that wasn't done so hap- hazardly, the street would be a lot, it would seem a lot better than what it does now. But that's what's making the street seem worse than it is, is because the patchwork is...
Why, why are we having a meeting about this? Why don't we have three contractors come and assess the situation, give us numbers, and then we look at their proposals, as, as opposed to...
Well, cause he has to draw up bid specs, don't you?
Right. Cause we have to know what we're having to do.
Can I ask for something?
Right. Well, you know, we do and we don't. Um, you know, I mean, it's a design-build thing. Tell us what, tell us what needs to be fixed, and how much it would cost to fix it. You're, that's what your guys basically said. This doesn't need fixed, this does need fixed.
Right.
And obviously, it's gotta have a sound foundation, it's gotta have, you know, rock under it, pass the compaction tests and all that stuff. But, um, so where, where does that get us?
Well, I guess though, Tom, if we, we could end up with three different contractors giving us three different bids that weren't equal.
I, I understand that. I completely understand that.
Yeah, we get...
But what makes us, who, who in our, uh, group, has that authority, has the, uh, engineering ability to say, "This is what we need done"? We should consult people that do it every day, and, and that whole part of, "Yeah, tell us what you think needs to be done, then we can evaluate those three bids, and say, okay, this makes the most sense." I mean, I've been on a lot of asphalt, but I don't know, I don't know what's about it.
And, and the other concern that this contractor raised, and it was a red flag to me, too, was when we were talking about tapering it down, once you get less than two inches, you can't really taper it, because it becomes so weak, it's gonna, it's just gonna fracture.
Five to three.
But then, that means every time you turn on that street, you're gonna have a...
No, it'd be crowned in the middle, it'd be thick as in the middle.
Yeah, but how do you, how do you feather it at the end?
Just the, the...
How, how do you do the five? Because, what, two, two and a half inches is all you can lay at a time?
Well, you can lay nine inches at a time.
Yeah, but you can't feather it, though.
You won't get the compaction rate.
Yeah, I have enough sense to know that, that you're gonna get the compaction.
But, but, but anyway, that's...
I know nothing about paving.
Yeah, I don't know. I know that...
Mayor, can we get somebody that knows concrete to evaluate this? This was an asphalt guy, apparently.
Right, right.
But Terry Geely might have somebody that he can go to. He told me he'd be glad to help us, you know, if we need any kinda information or help with concrete.
Do we, do we have a city engineer currently?
Yeah, well...
Well, we don't have one, however.
Yeah, we're on our...
You've been, you've been using Mayor, uh, for small projects.
Doesn't it make sense?
For large projects, we've got to...
Doesn't it make sense to have an engineering firm come and assess the situation, and give us their advice? I mean, I would imagine that all of a sudden, I'd say, we'd probably come up with a pretty good plan. I'm not an asphalt guy. I mean...
Most of it's just common sense.
Well, it may be a little more than that. You know, maybe mixed properties and, and all kinds of different things that we don't know anything about.
Yeah.
You know, concrete strengths, and are you gonna use fiber, are you gonna use rebar? Are you gonna put a textile underneath it? I mean, I don't know that stuff. I know they do all that stuff. I don't know why they do all that stuff.
Right.
Sure doesn't make sense to fix a road that's already okay.
I guess though, Tom, that's the gamble you take. I, I heard a lot of new bridges that engineers just designed, that whoever put in out in the county, pretty well got washed out after this rain, so...
Well, I, I don't think you can compare that to what we're talking about.
Well, but how, how can you, how can you assess anything on that?
Well, I, this is, it's a whole road. You dig it out X million inches deep, you put rock back in at the compaction rate, you, you put either concrete or asphalt back on it, with or without...
But whatever you do, you gotta fix what's on the bottom. You can't, just put more over the top.
Yeah, years ago, when, uh, Carl, this is Alderman, you know, he was kinda pushed to replace the concrete out there. And it was just, it was just unbelievable. You know, they just, they just, it's this much concrete on dirt, and they dug it out, and they put this much concrete back on dirt. It was shameful, what we did. You know, it's gotta be careful.
Who did that?
I don't know. I think our guys did it, actually. Most of it.
Where was this?
Was that that one patch?
There was a couple places out of point base.
On point base, yeah.
Not over there.
It was up in, like, not the very back street, but the one, just this way. And it made it better, but it was a patch.
Right.
You know, five years from now, whoever's sitting on this porch is gonna pass it again. So, we got, we got a little bit of money to fix what we can, I think.
You wanna check with Terry Geely? If he's got, he's got people he can get ahold of, you know, me, that can assess, you know, the concrete issues.
Well, they got Bowman, Jokers.
They might have that, there's, um, testing equipment that you can use to determine thickness, and whether there are any voids under it, and the kinda structural integrity of the concrete in place.
Right.
Well, it's just a, it's just a density check.
Right, and a density thing, yeah.
So, uh, I don't know if they have that, if they own that equipment, but I can talk to them about, about that.
Yeah.
But as far as, I mean, if, if the question is whether the asphalt contractor's impression is correct, it, it would then be a concrete guy's opinion, as to what needs to come out and what can stay.
Right.
I think, I think that's great that you guys, we cannot work, and you got a starting point to have a discussion. But I think it's, it sounds like the discussion's gotta keep going till we get enough people, we, we get somebody we, that makes the most sense to us.
We've had the asphalt people come out and look at it, two of them, they said it would work.
One said do it, and one said don't.
Which one?
Well, Bowman, Bowman was the first one, who said, "You can do this, the five inch down to the three inch, and if you use, uh, attack code and the geos fiber, uh, you'll, you'll control the reflective cracking, but you won't eliminate it. Eventually, those cracks will find their way back."
But they also said we had to fix the bad spots.
Right.
Everybody's gonna say that.
But, you know, this guy said, "That's not a good idea." What's, uh, the third opinion, from a paving contractor, asphalt contractor, to me, is, just kinda puts you in the trick bag of having to decide, it's like, who's got the tiebreaker vote? I think the analysis of someone who doesn't really have an interest in the work, probably is the best.
Right, a disinterested party is not gonna benefit.
That gets back to the engineer. Do you wanna spend money on your, on the engineer?
Well, which, I don't know what the price that is.
Well, he's...
What's, what's he...
Do we, do we know what, uh...
Just about an hour for his time.
So what, what's he gonna do? Is he gonna, is he gonna drill, or what's he gonna do? What, what, what would he do?
I can talk to him about whether he's competent, feels competent to evaluate existing, existing concrete. Uh, I, I don't know, that's something he does.
I'm assuming what he's gonna say is, "The unknown under it."
Yeah.
Yeah, and they can do just a small core drill, and know, I mean, that's what, that's what, that's what, yeah, but that's what contractors do. That's the only, the only accepted way, is to court, and, and that's a not very big operation, if you're talking about...
Yeah, I, I kept on hearing from my time, I think we're going to a meeting of the regional city administrators, which I did, and I raised this question, because I wanted to draw from their expertise, and none of them overlay just the slab. They do a lot of other things. They, they'll kinda mill it, uh, and so they take down kinda half of the existing concrete. They'll rubbleize it, so it's actually not a word, but that's what they do. And they basically take those jackhammers, and they just pulverize it, and then that becomes your base, and then you overlay on top of that.
Up again.
Uh, but nobody recommended just a straight overlay.
Right. And really, like we said, you know, that, the, from the Ford dealer up, about two-thirds of the way, there's really, that's part of the street's not bad at all. It's relatively smooth, you know? But it's just when you get down towards the west end, where it's so bad.
Only on the right side, the left side.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, if we could get away with just digging that out, doing that part right, you might be money ahead of the game, you know?
Alright, I'll get with Mr. Geely, and we'll, we'll, we'll see what we can come up with.
Yeah.
And, uh, I'll report back to you.
Okay.
But not only from there, we have to go back to Parkwood, too, that way.
Well, we got a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to spend, so depending on what we do where, determines how much we get done.
Right. But I...
But the same issue for Parkwood, and we know, I mean, you probably, did you look at the Parkwood?
No.
No. It's as bad as...
It looks just like you got the same thing going on there, yeah.
Yeah, all through there. It's all done the same way, it's all falling apart the same way.
Yeah. But the big thing is, you know, I just would hate to see us spend money on something, and then have it crumble again, and then it's like money, we just threw it out the window, that we don't have to do, so...
Even though we don't have much money to spend, I agree a hundred percent.
We gotta make sure that we spend it wisely, so...
Let's stop, let's stop patching. And if we can only fix this much, let's fix that much.
At least fix that part right, yeah.
But because twenty years ago, the patching started, or thirty, or however many years ago, some, at some point, and so that's kinda where we're at now, is dealing with all these patching jobs. And, um, I think it takes a courageous board to stand up and fix something, and a very lazy board to patch.
I would not know how many millimeters feet that we would have to take care of, you mark right up on that.
I think it could be evaluated, is what I'm saying. Yeah, I think we can, they're, they're...
And I did some checking, there were, there was an island on Parkwood. You can, you, well, you can see it. I looked at it after you talked about that, Mayor, and you can see that strip right up the middle there.
That probably looked really good when it was made.
It probably did. When the bank came in, and they needed access to their parking lot, they decided just to take it all out.
Joe, you draped all that, right?
No, I did ask, after the meeting that night, I found out.
I don't remember that at all.
I had a different theory why he came out, but that's probably right, the bank.
Okay. So what, did they have flowers planted in the middle or something?
Yeah, trees, didn't they?
Oh, did they?
Trees, what they said.
Probably planted, I don't remember.
Well, those don't plant in sidewalks, for God's sake.
It doesn't work that wide.
That just fall, we never did do anything with that, did we?
No.
Well, we...
I mean, we did a lot of work, but we never really addressed it after we'd done the work.
No, but you, we can't, we can't.
From which part?
Because we're in the new budget year, and we might have a little money we can spend, do it.
Definitely, something worth revisiting, I think. There's no good answer, and a lot of opinions, and everything.
What's that, Tom?
It's just the trees downtown, busting the concrete up, tearing sidewalks up. Uh, we spent a lot of time, actually, in committee, in, in researching the right kinda trees, and talking to the state, and, uh, we had the electric people, their arbers came out, and, and talked to us, and we looked at it, and I think basically, anything you plant in a sidewalk, will eventually
Buckle the sidewalk.
Have a problem, alright? Um, so I don't think, there was no...
Our plan was to try and take a tree out of the sidewalk, and get private property owners in the area to allow us to plant a tree on their property, which enhances the value of their property, and kinda trade shade for shade.
Yeah, so if you took all the trees out and put pots in, so you go different places, you see that, right, the big concrete pots with flowers. It's really pretty, but it doesn't create any shade or heat relief from people walking around downtown. And there's the maintenance of the flowers.
I thought they said the last thing, the Ginkgo tree was the last thing.
Uh, you know what, I think, I think three people told me the best thing, and it was all three had a different thought. You know, there's some kinda Kentucky coffee tree, I don't remember that.
Cut one out of my yard, and I'll tell you, the fruit that falls off of that...
Oh, you got, you got mail.
You get the mail.
Yeah.
Chalk over it, basically.
Let me tell you, that was, that was like living in a cow pasture.
It made perfect sense to me. I don't know nothing about trees. But you dig that hole out, you put a concrete, uh, pipe in it, that three feet down or four feet, whatever fits, you plant a tree in that. All the roots just go there. When the roots start popping out of the ground, you pull that tree out, and you put another tree right there in that same hole, and, and all you're doing is just...
You can plant...
But probably doesn't work that way, cause it's too simple.
You know, if you're starting from scratch, on virgin soil, you can plant street trees that don't do that, because you create a big enough root zone for them underneath the surface. But when you're in older, compacted soils, you can't dig up a big enough spot without disrupting the life of everybody in the neighborhood.
There's so much else going on in there. And we talked about that, pulling the trees out. That was all roots, you know, where we're at.
Main Street's holding up pretty good.
You know what the problem is, is the river roads, they're just too small holes to put the trees in.
That's right, you know?
We never came up with a good solution, so it's just kinda, it's kinda fell off the radar, but we really need to get it back on there.
Put in what they said, put in soil, dug it down, and all that kinda stuff.
You could actually, you could actually put a big barrier around those trees, then we make everything go down.
Yeah.
Everything go down.
Talking about that, but the problem was money.
They're not very expensive.
Right now...
They're hardly nothing at all, price-wise.
I don't remember them.
Last budget year we had.
Those root areas, things, to keep it from spreading out. Now, we, we did it, we did it in front of the old courthouse.
Yeah.
Dick, we did it in front of the old courthouse. When we put those cherry trees in, those blooming cherry trees, we put that barrier down there, and it seems like it's working real well. Trees died, but hell's the barrier was... Nice looking barrier, I tell you. There you go.
Operational success, but the patient died.
Alright, but that was the only topic on my agenda, unless anyone has anything for a work session.
I do. Well, I don't think necessarily I should go to a work session.
Well, it's where we are.
Uh, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Are we locking the bathrooms?
Yes, sir.
Good, thank you. And that will happen every night?
Supposed to.
Is that a little yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Let's pack you out, we saw it.
I wanted to hear a yes, chief.
A yes, sir.
Okay.
Like down there by the, um, Yule Valley building?
Who trims them bushes?
Bolvery building.
Who trims them bushes?
Aren't each of those gardens taken care of by...
Somebody needs to, cause you get, you pull out there in a little car, you're pulling out in front of somebody, they're so tall.
Is that one of those that has the little name, Black?
Oh, I don't know. I don't know, I just...
No, wouldn't be, uh, where are we here?
Down in the courthouse, where the... A Bolvery building, all that down in there.
The Valley Banff thing was right there.
You're talking about coming out of the alley?
Out of the alley.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. On each side of that Bolvery.
It's a jury of some, some start from these bushes.
Well, I don't know whose bushes they are. You know, those, most of the downtown plantings, the master gardeners, I can take care of.
I don't know that they're doing anything down through there. I, I think they got, they got
They've got their adopted plant.
Two quarters, and they got the planter boxes. I know this because Jones out of town, I've been, I've been not having to water.
Yeah, we asked you about that.
But I have strict instructions on what to water and when. Thank goodness, it's raining, it's terrible it's raining, but, um, I don't know that, I don't know that anybody's doing anything down there with those. If they are, it's probably not the Florida League Garden Club. It might be somebody else.
She's a Florida League gardener?
She's both, but it's, but they're different. And boy, do they, boy, do they get testy when you screw...
I learned that the hard way.
When you differ, they get testy when you screw it up.
Yeah. But I'm not sure who the membership is. I just have instructions on who to call.
I didn't know we had two different garden clubs, you know?
We do. Most, most are in the same, some are not. And they just like to get their, uh, credit words due, I guess. And thank goodness they do that, cause those, those, you know, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. It's a lot of money that they put into that, too, that, out of their pockets, that they do that with. But, uh, it looks good, you know?
It's a real service to the city.
Yeah.
That corner down by the restroom, looks, they work on that a lot.
I really wish there'd be some other people to take over some of the other areas.
Oh, yeah, listen, I think that they would, the garden clubs would both love to have new members. To become a master gardener, to be in the master gardener's club, you actually have to take some classes, and, um, be commissioned a master gardener. And I know that, uh, the, uh, the county, or, not the county, but, uh, Missouri University.
Extension service.
The extension service. They actually have, I think, some scholarships that they've given in the past, for people to attend the classes. And I think those, those groups would love to have, like every other volunteer group in, in the city, would love to have more people, you know, and new, and, new, and new people with a lot of energy.
Yeah, see, it's, it's, part of the problem, and the Levy district has recently addressed this, is, they've kinda looked around the table, ended up their collective ages, and said, "Somebody, somebody younger's gonna have to, to start getting involved, or there's not gonna be anybody that manages Levy."
I think every, every group in town suffers from the, the fatigue of the core members that, that do all, the most of the work, you know, and, and the just, listen, others are getting any younger.
It's that hundred people. To their, a hundred people in St. Genevieve to do everything. And you keep running into them.
Well, if you...
Dismissioned, that board, that club.
If you look at, uh, the volunteers available in St. Genevieve, what's our population, forty-four, hundred people-ish? You got the Lions Club, the Elks, the Eagles, the Legion, the VFW, and the Ladies Auxiliary, the Hospital, and probably three or four I'm leaving out. Who am I leaving out of the...
J.C.'s?
The J.C.'s.
J.C.'s, Eagles, K.C.'s.
The K.C.'s, Rotary Club. Think about that number of people involved in those organizations. That is a large percentage of our population.
Of course, there's a lot of it, there's multiple memberships, right?
Yeah, but if you could ever have a round table where they would coordinate events, you know, it blows me away. Every year, the King's Ball is the same night as a big trivia thing at the Legion. There's absolutely no sense in that. Somebody could nut, could budge, you know, cause half the people that wanna, these people wanna go both places, but they can't. So if they budged a little, both events would have higher attendance and make more money for their chosen charity.
I'm not sure the King's Ball could stand any more attendance.
Um, I got, we just gotta get a bigger, gotta get a bigger bill.
I don't think you're gonna get them to budge, because that's gotta be, but I, I know what you mean. We go for three or four weeks, and there's seemingly nothing to do, and then on one weekend, there's like four or five things going on.
There's room, there's room to, to coordinate, uh, and get those, those leaders to coordinate a little bit, and...
I talked to Sam, we're about to keep the, uh, tourism there, putting up a bulletin board. I'll take care of it, but five years and...
It's hard.
The bulletin board of what?
You know?
The planned activities. Like you said, you get three this weekend, and then you don't have any for the rest of the month.
Well, what's on the board that we put up here outside the courthouse? That's, is a map. They aren't putting up, well, that was intended to be for planned activities. And we have a volunteer to take care of it.
You're right, Martin, it's, it's a hundred people. It's, it's the same hard-working hundred people that are involved in everything. And, uh, you know, I, I talk to people all the time, and they say, "Well, nothing's ever going on in St. Genevieve." You know, where I work in Festus, we get the St. Jen Herald. And the administrative assistant, she reads a Herald every weekend, every week, and she just raves at all the stuff that's always going on in St. Genevieve. So there is always stuff going on here. It's just somehow our, our hometown folks are, they're missing it, you know?
You know how many people live in St. Louis that never go to the Arch?
Nothing, it's a great, great example.
Or the zoo? You know, and they'll say, "There's nothing to do here. There's a lot to do there." But it's, it's sorta like when it's in your own backyard, you kinda...
All the people that do all the hard work, you know, just thank goodness for that.
We, we had some family coming down, uh, that was when we took that ghost tour, that I invited you along with, uh, a couple Fridays ago, or two to three Fridays ago. And they were all from St. Louis, and they came down to go, and they were all surprised. There was people walking downtown, there was music playing, music playing there. There was, they were quite surprised what goes on in St. Genevieve, but not...
Probably six weeks ago, but we walked out of the Oris after dinner, and we walked down the street to the car, and it's like, wow, this is such a beautiful town. You know, the streetlights were on, and, I mean, uh, I, we just, you know, you can't see the forest from the trees, kinda things. It's, uh, it's, and all the people that, that spend their money and their energy, thank goodness for all of it.
Give us the art walk weekend, so everybody's walking around with that. It was just that people...
What a great thing the art walks come out to be. That is a grassroots thing, is growing and growing, and they're doing a great job.
I wasn't the ghost tour thing, did I mean? Forgot, man.
Does anyone else have big things to say?
Yeah, one minute.
Paul Harvey would say, and now the rest of the story.
We don't have time for an update, do we? On the Third Street Bridge, I think we talked to, and what did we say?
No, no.
Danny's got it in.
Alright, that's cool. So, alright, please stand for a quick minute.
We are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Graham Minter.
Here.
Alderman Caldwell.
Here.
Alderman Couch.
Here.
Alderman John Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Hook.
I'm here.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Rezika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a form.
Thank you. Approval agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Third. Fourth. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, law review.
Okay, we're working diligently to get the, uh, water line easements that are needed for the water projects. And with the, um, cooperation of John Stupi, who's got to sign some easements, uh, and his direction, and, and Alderman Joker's is gonna try and help us get a, another one. I think, I think we're not gonna have any problem getting them. Uh, except for two of the property owners kind of have, uh, asked me to talk to their tenants. And we'll need to talk about that in closed sessions because it's gonna involve real estate negotiation. So we'll have a short closed session at the Advocates Meeting for, for real estate. Uh, as many of you know, T. Drury Contracting is working away. They're about to finish the Ninth Street portion of the project. Uh, they'll have pavement replacement. They'll move on to, um, I said Seventh Street. It's, uh, they'll be doing Eighth Street next. And then they'll go on to Seventh Street and South Gavery.
Are they doing the paving also, Martin?
They have to do the, the repair. They won't do it. They'll hire-
Right.
Went to the Heritage Commission meeting, uh, where they approved and recommended certificates of appropriateness for two more VRBOs that are on the agenda, I guess, for tonight?
Planning and zoning, wasn't it?
Maybe planning, huh?
That was planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning, I'm sorry. The, um, submitted the loan application we discussed for, uh, the lighting improvements at Trotman Industrial Court. Um, they, they will not decide until August on these, uh, these loans. I think I may have already told you this. Uh, but based on the loans that they have received and the nature of our loan, getting very positive response from the agency. Uh, the issue is whether the tenant wants to purchase the, the, the lights kind of at his risk, uh, for installation before we know we get the loan. Uh, and they're free to choose to do that. I've explained it to them and, and, and they like to get the work done before the equipment arrives. So that's their motivation to, to, to do it. Um, regardless, they've received their, we, we would, the credits that are due from, from Citizens Electric. We had scheduled a, a, a meeting to, to, to look at the, um, fire truck, to kind of come up with a value for it for online advertising. And so the crew fired it up on Wednesday night in anticipation of us coming by the next day. Uh, and it blew a hose, either a cooling or an eating hose. And, uh, so as soon as that's fixed, we'll, we'll get back on taking a look at that.
We got, what we were gonna do is establish where we were gonna list that we can't establish a price. It's gotta be bidded.
Well, it, it can be bid.
It's gotta be bidded first, and then after you bid it, nobody, then you can put a price on it. I don't believe you can put a price in the beginning.
Okay.
On anything like that, city or county.
And once again, real silly question. I was just coming on the board when this was going on. There's no way to fix that fire truck that's usable for us anymore.
Well, you can fix anything, Alderman Hook, I mean. I don't know how much money they wanna spend.
But will they use it once it's fixed? Whatever's wrong with it? I mean, I guess that's the next question.
Yeah.
That, uh, got quite heated.
It's about to, again, we should probably move on.
Okay. Um, I mentioned in our work session that there's about once a quarter the city administrators from the cities in the southeast region get together. Uh, we have a program of mutual interest in, and we talk about issues, kind of like I did with the overlaying on, of concrete, you know, you kind of get advice from people who've been there. Um, that, the idea that was at the, put, put forward at the last meeting was whether we should try and form a consortium of the cities to look at doing a, a healthcare consortium. Uh, it's being done in St. Louis County. Um, but they won't let us in. So, uh, if we want to do the same thing, we'd have to form our own. Uh, and the, the kind of the magic number is you got to get a group together with at least a minimum of a thousand employees. Um, and so for us, Cape Girardeau and Springfield pretty much have to be on board. Poplar Bluff, no, it wouldn't be Poplar Bluff. It'd be Cape and Springfield before we could possibly reach the, the, the thousand. But, uh, there was no representative from Springfield, but the Cape and Jackson representatives thought it was a good idea. So, um, we're, we're gonna pursue it and see if it comes to fruition. Gives you more kind of control, creates a larger market for, for people who are providing healthcare and, uh, should hopefully be reflected in, in, in lower, more stable rates. The, uh, Main Street Trail finally being advertised for bid. Um, the bid opening is scheduled for July the 29th. Uh, it's on the MoDOT website. It's in Dun and Bradstreet. It's being advertised in the Herald, and we should get some good response. Um, I'd mentioned at our last meeting that there might be some assistance from the Department of Transportation for design on the Third Street Bridge replacement. They sent a guy out who measured it and determined that it didn't quite, didn't meet their minimum size for, for this engineering assistance, which is not totally relevant because, uh, the real, real hope is that FEMA through SEMA will, uh, will help us to, to replace it. There's a meeting scheduled with, uh, the SEMA representative, uh, Tuesday. Dave and I will attend. Felix Meyer will attend, uh, and, and their road department guy to talk about the level of damages. We had over a million dollars' worth of damages and, and the flooding and the rains that took out the Third Street Bridge, um, throughout the county. And, and, and they only needed $64,000 to qualify for, for assistance. Um, of course, we're claiming of the million dollars, the Third Street Bridge is, is a major portion of that. It, it obviously could be repaired cheaper than that. But I'm hoping FEMA will adopt the attitude towards that that they have adopted towards repairing houses in the floodplain. It just doesn't make sense to keep throwing good money after bad. Let's just mitigate it and, and move on. Uh, if, if they do, then, then that $612,000 figure is based on the Corps of Engineers 2003 estimate. It was updated with an inflation calculator to, to today's dollars. And, uh, and so it's based on that Corps of Engineer design. Uh, FEMA may look at that and say, "Whoa, I don't think you need to do all that," but we'll cover that base when we get to it.
So you should know some more Tuesday.
Yes.
To a degree.
Yeah, the, the guy that's coming down here isn't gonna make the decision Tuesday. He's gonna collect all the-
Figure out when you'll have your next meeting.
Take, take it back.
Just figure out when you have the next meeting.
It, it is a process. And, and you're right. It's, and then, yeah. Every time you receive FEMA funds, you gotta go to their training program. So they make sure you keep the right records. Even if you went to that program two years ago, they don't let you rat on your laurels.
Mm-hmm. Any questions?
Thank you, Martin.
Thanks. Okay. Any other reports, Mr. Martin?
Committee?
Yeah.
Oh, we had the St. Jen TV Committee meet last week. Uh, there's some plans to have an open house to showcase all the things that have been done down there recently with the-
Pretty nice.
Yeah. It's, it's gonna be pretty nice when they get, gotta get it cleaned up a little more down there, so. Uh, but other than that, we're, we're hoping to get the time, temperature, and radar back on the screen again on 990. So that, that's in the works, is my recollection. And you think so also, Martin?
Yeah, it requires the purchase of a $1,800 piece of equipment.
Yeah.
And the board said, "Go ahead and buy it because that's a feature everybody likes."
Yeah. Right.
For sure.
So, uh, where the downtown renewal might put their, their program on. I think that was your suggestion when it come.
Well, all I give is, uh, ask them to inquire about it and hope that something they have.
I think it's probably gonna move forward.
That's, that's what our access, public access TV is really just, that's exactly what it's for.
They are? They're moving on with that? Good.
I didn't know.
That's a, that's a great group. They do a lot of new work.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah, they are.
Do you know of anything else, Martin?
That's pretty much it, I think.
Actually, it was a, a, one of the better meetings.
It was. It was really productive.
In terms of being productive and everybody kind of cooperating and taking on responsibilities and-
Yeah.
Good, good.
Yeah. So we always use donations.
Yeah, well, that's a big thing.
Got more going on than coming in.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. Well, well, and you got it on, on the internet now, too, you know? So try to maybe, uh, have some people involved there to make donations through the internet, you know? So, we'll see.
All the people that don't have cable TV, that's all right there on, what's their YouTube site? The St. Jen TV or something like that?
Website, stjen.tv.com.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all right there. So, uh, no excuse for anybody to say, "Well, I never get to see it" because it's out there.
Yeah.
I use it a lot when I can't, in trying to recollect what was said or what was decided in meetings. It's just right there.
Yeah.
I usually don't wanna remember.
Yeah, I do that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Anything else? Okay, go to the, uh, two minutes of June 25th, the regular meeting.
I'm making motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ten minutes of the first session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the, uh, Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of St. Genevieve will hold a public hearing. Uh, and we will open that at 7:12 to consider a request for a special use permit from Jan and Kathy Bronze for, that will allow guest lodging per municipal code chapter 405 zoning resident regulations at 204 St. Mary's Road, St. Genevieve, Missouri. The property is currently located in a R2 general residential zone district. Hello, Jan.
Hi, Jan.
Hi, I'm Jan Bronze. My wife Kathy and I operate the Inn St. Jen Bovee and Dr. Herdick's House Bed and Breakfast. And we recently acquired the residential property at 204 St. Mary's Road, which is in the split of the fork of the, uh, St. Mary's Road and South, uh, Main Street. It's a 1929 craftsman-style, one-and-a-half-story house. Uh, it was, uh, in foreclosure and had some, uh, needed some care and repair. Let's put it that way. Uh, we invested time and money into it and decided that even though we bought it for our future retirement down the road, uh, we just thought it was a prized piece of real estate and wanted to snatch it up. And, uh, since we're not in a position to retire or, you know, desiring to retire, we just thought we'd turn it into rental property for, or hold it for our future. Uh, it turned out we just fell in love with that house and decided we couldn't really just turn it over to hearing about all the horror stories from landlords that we know. Uh, you know, the people that, uh, long-term rentals that end up abusing the property and so forth. So we decided to, uh, consider using it as a vacation rental by owner, known as VRBO, which is a worldwide program similar to Airbnb. Uh, Airbnb seems to appeal more to what we used to call, or still do call, um, youth hostels or overnight hostels. Uh, you know, people are going for just low-rent overnight stay. VRBO, on the other hand, is more like timeshare or, you know, a little more higher-end. And so Kathy and I plan to spend some evenings there. Uh, but in the meantime, we will, we would like to use it as an overnight or two, three, four-day stay property. It's a three-bedroom, 1,500-square-foot house. And, uh, I'd sure like your approval.
I just wanted to add, um, in your report, there are a number of conditions that, um, the planning commission recommended to go with the permit relates mainly to making sure that trash is cleaned up after each guest leaves and that, you know, things are posted regarding safety. And if there's a fire extinguisher and things like that that you might ordinarily see, um, in a hotel or a Airbnb. So, um, if you would approve it, if you can approve it with the conditions, um, that are attached in the staff report, that would be great.
On, on behalf of our insurance carrier, those conditions have been met long ago. And we have an occupancy permit. Uh, we have fire, uh, smoke alarms, fire extinguishers all. I guess you guys know I'm all about fire extinguishers.
Are you familiar with the conditions written?
A very proud-
Are you familiar with all the conditions that are written?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Are you okay with that?
Absolutely, yeah. Parking, off-street parking, all of that is implied.
Petrie?
Mm-hmm.
I have a question for you about, um, this says with the exception of number 10, which is the signage. Um, why is that different for the second applicant? Because of zoning?
Yes.
Okay.
In R2, you are permitted to have a sign. It has to be a small sign, no more than five square feet. Um, whereas in R1, no signage is permitted.
Okay.
So that's the difference between this application and the next one you're getting.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, the, we will close the hearing at 7:17. And, um, if somebody wants to make a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for fixing it up.
Yeah, absolutely.
In everyone's best interest.
Yeah, there you go.
Excuse me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at, uh, still being 7:17, we will open another public hearing, uh, to consider a request for a special use permit from David Crisma and Janice Warden. That will allow guest lodging per municipal code chapter 405 zoning regulations at 747 North Main. Uh, property is currently located in an R1 single-family residential zone district.
Um, the Wardens are not here tonight, but I can, I think I can speak for them and say that, um, this was kind of the property that started the whole discussion about changing our code to, to clarify language and, um, allow for the VRBOs. And Ms. Warden did purchase the property with the intent of, of using it as an VRBO, um, and did it because she wanted to save a building. And the economics were such that the VRBO seemed to be the way to finance, um, that, uh, re- renovation, which is quite nice. Um, that building had been sitting there for quite a while, um, and had a fair amount of damage. And, and she's brought it back very nicely and is still working on it. But, um, being that it is in an R1, previously the old code would have prevent, uh, prevented her from operating a VRBO. And now, under the new code, it's permitted with a special use permit and the same conditions essentially.
Chrisman and Ms. Warden, are they locals?
Yes, um, uh-
There was some complicate, complex reason they couldn't?
I don't know. She indicated that she was gonna be here. I'm not really sure what happened. She, she's the operator of Stella and Me.
Okay.
The restaurant, um, and also has another historic house in town. And so I'm not sure exactly what happened. I didn't have any reason to believe that she wasn't gonna be here. Um, I know that they're real excited about this, so, um, I, I hadn't gotten any word about it, so.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, we will close at 9:07. And if somebody wants to make a-
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Thank you for picking them. And we have resolution 201537, a resolution appointing Linda Vios to the St. Genevieve Housing Authority Board. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Don, are you still on the board?
What's that?
The Housing Authority Board?
Yeah.
Are they full up with their members?
Yes, this was, we need a resident on there, and they should take care of that. I think there might still be one other, at least a question out there we may not have answered yet, but we may, we may still have one. We may have a vacancy yet. Okay, old business, bill number 4047, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2015 budget relating to the park fund budget number 20.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Codwell.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4047 now becomes ordinance 3983.
Thank you. Bill number 4048, second reading.
An ordinance approving a budget amendment to the City of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2015 budget relating to the general fund budget number 10, department number 18, Welcome Center.
Move to approve. Roll call, please.
Alderman Ruzika.
Yes.
Alderman Prince.
Yes.
Alderman Donnie Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Hook.
Yes.
Alderman Jokers.
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi.
Yes.
Alderman Couch.
Yes.
Alderwoman Codwell.
Yes.
Eight yes, zero no's. Bill number 4048 now becomes ordinance 3984.
Okay, thank you. Any business? Any public comments? Any other business? Well, yeah.
Mayor, this weekend with the county fair going on, I think we'll have probably some dignitaries in town, Kevin Eager and whatnot. Might be a good opportunity to take them down to the post office and let them look at that and see if anything can be done with that.
With what?
The post office. If that, if that ain't demolition by neglect, that is horrible down there.
Every chance we get, we, we match it to our federal government, Senator.
I just thought, someone's going to be in town.
Whose responsibility is that? Is it the state?
The post office, postal service.
Right.
So why don't they do it? Well, they don't have any money.
Well, that's what they keep, the answer, they keep getting back basically, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and the postmaster has said, "If they took back materials, I can get volunteers."
Well, some of it's the ground, like weeds and what have you.
Yeah, they would cut the grass a little more out of it.
Yeah. Leaves.
It's rough.
It's, I mean, I, we, we've sent pictures.
They're about as bad as the railroad, huh?
Well, they're about as independent as the railroad.
Yeah. Yeah, it did. The last time we were in the Bloomsville Post Office before they closed it.
Ooh.
It was just a squirrel's nest. It was terrible. I don't think we're alone in that, but you're right.
Now, they don't own, since, I got to think of the date, mid, early 80s, I think, they stopped building post offices. Now they're all leased, so they, they put out contracts, local investors build them and lease them back to them.
Yeah, a lot of them in the city are in strip malls and whatnot, yeah.
Even the freestanding ones, though, are generally owned by private individuals.
But this one they own?
This one they own.
Lucky us.
Okay, we have a request for a street closure from the Jurn and Fed president, Jamie Edman, for the Jurn and Fed Festival, August 7th, 8th, and 9th.
These are the same streets that are closed every year? Excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, are these the same streets that are closed every year?
I believe so. But my question is, August 7th is a Friday, and they normally close the streets in the afternoon?
Yeah, so it's like six o'clock.
And it doesn't say on here...
She should have put six o'clock, 6:00 PM.
Will it be later in the day?
Six PM.
Okay. Because I'm just thinking if it's all day, all those businesses in that area downtown, that would impact them. Okay.
I wrote that down, because I, she forgot to put that on there.
So if we approve it, we would stipulate that, as written, other than it has, can't be done until 6:00 PM?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We're going back.
Sorry?
I'll make a motion, sure. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.